...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where all your hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, my name is Fern Katz, I'm president of the Southfield Board of Education.
Yolanda Smith, vice president.
Penny Robinson, secretary.
Michael Cool, treasurer, Vanessa Williams, trustee.
Gerald Buchanan, trustee.
Wanda Cook Robinson, superintendent.
Joan Newberry, Joan Newberry, interim associate superintendent for human resources and relationships.
And we have associate superintendent for business operations.
And, good evening, Lynda Wood, associate superintendent for instruction. Dr. Cook Robinson, has a very special announcement for us today.
Yes, and thank you. And to the board and to the community, wanted to share with you that after nine years as superintendent here at Southfield Public Schools, I will be leaving to accept another position. I want to share with this board that you are simply the best. This has been the best job of my career. So it's with mixed emotions that I share this with you this evening. Very sad believing all of you as I look into the faces of my administrators who I've been spending time with recently, but I'm excited about the challenge ahead. Many of you know, the past year as superintendent of the year, I've spent a lot of time working in Lansing, working in Washington, for the advocacy of public education. And that is where my passion has taken me. At this time, I think I need to join that fight for public education so that Southfield can continue to be an outstanding district. So I'm not leaving you, I'm simply moving up the road and expanding my work so that I can do this advocacy piece. I love the district and I love this board, I commend you for what you have done. You have stood behind this superintendent through some very, very tough times. We've had some tough decisions, but we've worked through them. We've had to step out in front and lead this county in some very controversial decisions. But when I look behind me, my board, my administrators, my staff, and my students were always there. And that is what I will take with me, it's those memories. So I want to say thank you to the Board of Education, thank you to this community, thank you to my administrators, staff, and students. You have been invaluable and a treasure in my life. Thank you.
Southfield Public School Board of Education, proclamation in honor of Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson. Whereas, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson has been the superintendent of Southfield Public Schools since July 2006. And using her years of educational experience and vast leadership skills, Dr. Cook Robinson has led Southfield Public Schools into a new era of increased student achievement, expanded opportunities for students, and enhanced professional development. And whereas, under Dr. Robinson, no, excuse me, Dr. Cook Robinson's leadership, Southfield Public Schools became the sixth school district in the state of Michigan to be awarded district accreditation by Advanced Ed NTA. Dr. Cook Robinson oversaw the opening of the new University High School Academy and MacArthur K. A. University Academy, both in partnership with the University of Michigan Dearborn. The science, technology, engineering, and mathematics program at Leavy Middle School, Vandenberg Elementary Schools, transitioned to Vandenberg World Cultures K. V. Academy, and the introduction of Mandarin Chinese Language Instruction and University High School Academy in Vandenberg. Dr. Cook Robinson's educational initiatives included international baccalaureate, Ivy World School Visitation at Southfield Laker High School, and Thompson K. A. International Academy, establishing the high school dual enrollment program, credit recovery program, and creative Saturday School. And whereas, Dr. Cook Robinson established a four-year partnership with the Association of Supervision and Curriculum Development to identify strategies that would help to operationalize Southfield Public Schools' goals for all students by closing the achievement gap in reading proficiency. This partnership focused on incorporating the understanding by design framework district-wide to support differentiated instruction throughout the district. Due to the overwhelming success of this program, Southfield Public Schools now serves as a model site for ASCD. And whereas, Dr. Cook Robinson's leadership makes an impact on thousands of students who attend the district from various socioeconomic backgrounds. Data collected from reading proficiency scores on the meet between 2007 and 2012 show a reduction in the achievement gap between all students, including economically disadvantaged students. Overall, assessments data indicate that academic achievement in the district is on the rise. The number of students taking advanced placement courses has increased, and in November 2011, Southfield Public Schools was named Academic State Champion by Bridge Magazine for its 91 percent graduation rate. And whereas, Dr. Cook Robinson has received a number of accolades, both as a leader in education and as a dedicated community member, including being named 2013 Michigan State Superintendent of the Year by the Michigan Association of School Administrators, Wayne State University Corps of Education, Alumni Association's Distinguished Educator Award, and the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., Southfield Alumni Chapter's Educator of the Year Award. She has received recognition as an honoree by the Women's Action for New Directions and the International Institute of Metropolitan Detroit Incorporated. Highly active in her community, Dr. Cook Robinson represents the district on a local, national, and international scope by serving on various boards, including the Board of Southfield Community Foundation, National Express Corporation, Wayne State University Board of Visitors, Oakland University Department of Educational Leadership, Zonta Club of Southfield, Southfield Area Chamber of Commerce, and Detroit Area Free College Engineering Program, DAP-Step. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Southfield Public School Board of Education joins the Southfield Public Schools' community in recognition of the outstanding contribution of Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson to the school district, community, and students served. My proclamation declared by the Southfield Public Schools Board of Education at the regular board meeting held today on February 11, 2014. Fern Katz, President, Southfield Board of Education, Yolanda R. Smith, Vice President, Southfield Board of Education.
And now, I think we would like to hear from Mr. James Jackson, who is representing Senator Levin.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Cook Robinson, President Katz, members of the board, and members of the Southfield community. I bring you greetings on behalf of my boss, U.S. Congressman Gary Peters, who could not be here this evening, but wanted me to, did not want this to be Dr. Cook Robinson's last meeting without recognizing her contributions to this district and this community. And to commemorate that, I would like to present a congressional record statement on behalf of the congressman in honor of Dr. Cook Robinson. And I won't read the entire thing. It lists a lot of the many achievements that Ms. Robinson just read. But I do want to read, I do want to read the closing passage. And just so that everybody knows, a congressional record statement is a document that is read into the official records of Congress, and it's read on the floor of the House and addressed to the Speaker of the House. So the final passage of this says, "Mr. Speaker, as we continue to move into a future where knowledge is an increasingly critical component of our nation's enduring prosperity, providing a world-class education that prepares our youth to meet this demand is crucial. The work of educators like Southfield Public Schools Superintendent Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson is a key part of the continuing success of the greater Detroit region, the state of Michigan, and our nation. I congratulate Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson on her achievements, and know that as she transitions to new responsibilities, that she will continue to play a vital role in preparing our youth to meet the challenges and demands of our challenging world." Again, this is written into the official record of the U.S. House of Representatives and will be forever archived in the Library of Congress. And we have a frame, we'll still have a copy. And if you'll indulge me for just another minute, I'd be remiss if I did not say a few words because I wear two hats this evening. As many of you know, and some may not know, I am a former school board member, and I was a member of the board when we hired Wanda to be our superintendent. And as a lifeblood school board member, and as these members can tell you, there are many votes that you take. Some are easy, some are difficult. And there are some that you're proud of, and some that, well, they just were what they were. But I can honestly say that of the time that I was on the school board, the vote that I am most proud of was voting to approve Wanda Cook Robinson to be the superintendent of Southfield Schools. And as a graduate of the district, as a father of three daughters in this district, and as a former board member, I have a lot of skin in this game. And I don't, and I know the task that is before my, the board members up here with regard to a search for a new superintendent. And I don't envy you. I've been through it, and I don't envy you. But I will say that the type of leader that this district has had, and the type of, the type of leader this district needs going forward continues to be the same. A leader of vision, of commitment, and passion. Passion for education, a passion for students, for learning. And I can honestly say that many would say that that type of individual, that type of leadership, for one district, comes once in a generation. But I hope for all our statements that's not the case. But I wish you well, Wanda. I consider you a friend, and I wish you all the best. Thank you.
In addition to you all, we have one more guest speaker, but he won't be here until eight o'clock. So we'll just have to be patient. We have one more letter here for you, Wanda. If I may. Dear Southfield Public Schools staff, parents, and community, some events in life are sad and happy at the same time. This is one of them. We weep at our loss, and we have great happiness for the good fortune and justified reward of our good friend and superintendent, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson. The entire board is grateful for what she has done for this district, as I know you are too. In 2013, Dr. Cook Robinson was named as one of the four best superintendents in the United States. She was named the best in the entire state of Michigan. Under her leadership, the district has overcome extraordinary challenges and attained a tremendous accomplishment. With her support, the board has received prestigious honors and awards. It is logical that she would be recognized as someone who would be recruited by others to assist during these troubled economic times. We want to assure our staff, parents, and community that a transition plan is in place, and we have full confidence in our leadership team. Dr. Cook Robinson, we thank you for all that you have done in the almost ten years that you have been our superintendent. Thank you for your outstanding leadership. We will truly miss you. Sincerely, Fern Katz, President, and the Southfield Board of Education.
Thank you so much.
And I think I must know if something else you want to say, gentlemen and ladies? We will continue with our meeting. Congratulations to Malaya Watson. Malaya is a Southfield High School student who was selected to be a contestant on the national television show, American Idol. She is here tonight to tell us about her experience. Malaya? Would you play it, please?
Did you take your small business to a regional sales conference? A very important regional sales conference. Business trips can be tax deduction, and TurboTax gets you every deduction you deserve. Intuit TurboTax, it's amazing what you're capable of. Here comes Malaya taking her way up to the keyboard now. She did a great job in Detroit. Let's see if she can be as authentic. Now all the judges away once again.
I totally joined when you...
Thank you.
I keep saying...
It's okay, it's okay. That's enough, baby.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm late. I was here like seven. I've seen national anthem for our basketball game today, but no. Um, maybe I was being pretty cool, you know, seeing that I am young. I'm not calling y'all old, that's not... But, you know, being sixteen, like, doing what twenty-year-olds do, going through, like, the actual business and stuff like that, it's pretty, it's pretty, it's pretty stressful. But at the same time, it's exciting. But in the end, it's all good. There's nothing, there's nothing bad about it. So, um, here to represent, so, but yeah, it's been a good experience, you know, getting that exposure to, like, the actual music business before I actually, like, you know, do music and stuff. But that's my attention. Oh, yeah, I get that. But yeah.
If y'all could vote for me, that would be great.
Who do you go next?
Um, next, the show airs tomorrow, and that one is showing the final, final, um, final audition. And they, uh, then they cutting that from, I don't know if I made it yet, but they cutting that from seventy-seven to maybe thirty-one.
Wow.
Thank you. Yeah, so, guys gotta watch the show. There's any questions, y'all can ask questions. I like questions.
Well, aside from music, what other interests do you have?
Um, right now, I'm in Marching Ben at my sophomore high school. I'm just really there, and also, I mean, at home, I usually do business with my dad, who's amazing because, I, um, my mom, on the other hand, she's having... But no, I do dad, and, but, like, when I go to college, I want to say music theory and nursing, because, you know, I love, it's weird, because I like, like, the ER, like, all that bloody stuff. And then you're like, oh, I got stabbed in the head, like, all that kind of blood. But other than that, I mainly do music all the time. All together, like, music is, like, my life. Are you okay? So, yeah, all together, I just do music all the time, all the time.
But so it's like that, you should go far, my man, yeah.
Or bigger.
Before she goes, I just wanted to make a comment. I met the family years ago over at Leavy Middle School. And I think we're in Uni Road, put on a musical, Old Left Field on. And I met Mr. Watson there, and I heard Malaya sing. After I heard her sing, what did I tell him? I told him she was gonna be a star. Didn't I tell you this? Malaya, your talent's gonna take you anyplace you want to go. Now, for this show, if she makes it to the next round, we're gonna have to get behind Malaya and start voting. So Jackie and Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, we may have to crank up that PR machine to get Malaya to where she needs to go. But I just want to let her know, I remember you when you were running around. I think you're still running around.
Oh, no, it's more of a jog now.
But I told your dad, when I first saw you, you were gonna be a star. So, we're all being honest.
I wanted to add one thing, too. Just a big thank you. It was so nice to see our school on American Idol, the halls of SHS looking all, you know, pristine. It just made our school district look so crisp, as well as that sign, I guess Fox Two Thousand One donated. It looked great. And I just feel like, you know, Fox Two News rarely comes by, and anytime any good things are happening, it was really, really nice to get some free media, earned media, however they call it. So, thank you, and thank your family. Good luck.
Congratulations.
My parents.
Oh, oh, wait.
It's my mom and dad.
Thank you.
You're okay. Nice job. Well. Southfield High School Band Director, Mr. David Miller, and Southfield Laker High School Band Director, Mr. Alex Armstrong, are here tonight with students from both schools. They are showcasing the new band uniforms that will be purchased for each school if the board approves the action, this items this evening. Where, are you here? Would you like to tell us about where you're going and what you're doing?
Good evening. I'm Alex Armstrong. I'm the director of band at Laker High School. I have with me today, I have Crystal Harris. She's one of our clarinet players in the band. She's a sophomore, so I might we have her for a few more years. We did a small update on uniform. It is similar to our previous uniform. We updated such things as the hat, the cape, the plumes. We actually redesigned a completely new drum major uniform. We haven't had a true drum major uniform in a long time, so we have a company drum major uniform that's going to feature a kind of chenille crest, kind of like you'd have on a varsity jacket, it's going to be black. So we're kind of doing a full package, but this was actually a student design back from when, last time this was designed, it was actually a student one decision that was made when Mr. Crutcher was still back here. And so we thought that it was still really true of our vision, as far as holding some traditional value, but also having a modern look. So we're very happy with how it turned out.
Hi, I'm David Miller. I don't like to talk as much as you. Remember my dad being... First off, I want to introduce Mr. Warman, and he's our other band director at Southfield High School, just because my name is... Updates on our uniform. It's the same type of style as our former uniform. It's not as dark looking as our previous uniform. If you'll remember, it was all navy and all gray. And it was just kind of dark from a distance, so that's why we added that little white patch on the front. As you know, sometimes we get down... Maybe you'll turn around real quick. You know, sometimes we get down on the ground, but the back is completely navy, so if it gets dirty, it doesn't show up as much. The cape, so that when we do the fast turns and whatnot, it will really show off nice. And then the white stripe, obviously, because we march on the side, and I make sure that off too, from the side. You know, it'll be really good from the side.
Well, thank you for the modeling.
And we really appreciate this, by the way. Thank you very much.
Well, now we have the report of the students board reference evidence. Lady Kennedy Armstrong first, from Southfield Regional Academic Campus.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kennedy Armstrong, and I am the student board representative from Southfield Regional Academic Campus. On January twenty-second, Mr. Solomon Sedan Club sponsored a field trip to the North American International Auto Show. Two buses carrying eighty-three students participated in the education day at the Detroit Auto Show. On February sixth, Mrs. Brown Perkins sponsored an annual field trip to Lawrence Tech University. While in attendance, students participated in Career Day Roundtable Discussions, followed by a campus tour and lunch. On February sixth, ninth grade counseling lessons began. In continuation with the lessons, Marcus Buick, Chastity Bridges, Anthony Debrino, Gregory Bowler, and Dejon Councils held due to panel discussions sharing life lessons to help underclassmen realize they have choices. On February eighth, twenty-one students from Southfield Regional Academic Campus began the Man Up Program at Oakland Community College. I and fourteen other young ladies from Southfield Regional Academic Campus, in conjunction with a hundred and fifty middle school and high school young ladies across Southfield School District, were in... School District, were inducted into the Zonta V Club last night at Michigan's first credit unit. I would like to mention that Tiana Salas-Liddell, from Southfield Regional Academic Campus, is our Zonta V Club president. We're a student spend time with your principal on a plane to Washington DC. That's what Gregory Bowler and William Bowen are doing these past two days, have been doing this for two days. Mr. Bolger was chosen to attend Safer Internet Day two thousand and fourteen conference in Washington DC, and chose these two young men to join him in panel discussion. Possibly you have heard me quote Mr. Bolger, what would you do if you weren't afraid? Well, Tiana Salas-Liddell found a need she was passionate about and signed our school up to participate in the Jeans for Teens fundraiser. If you would like to participate in this event, you can donate a pair of jeans or donate five dollars to buy a pair of jeans for this fundraiser. If interested, please contact Ms. Tiffany Johnson at Southfield Regional Academic Campus. In closing, please save the date, March nineteenth, for Southfield Regional Academic Campus Mid-Winter Career Fair. I also would like to say, thank you to Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson for everything you have done, you are well appreciated and you will be well missed, although we will support you as you went your own.
Mr. David Cole of Southfield High School.
Hello to the Board of Education, school superintendents, administrators, and community members. My name is David Cole, and here is the Booj Airport. The National Arts Society inducted twenty-seven new members today in a ceremony held inside of our auditorium. On February twenty-eighth and March first, Southfield Robotics Team is hosting its first competition in the, in the history of Southfield High School. Junior Malaya Watson made it to Hollywood on American Idol, and is continuing to show her strong singing ability while on the show. I personally would like to congratulate her. By the end of the week, freshmen, sophomores, and juniors will conclude all math testing. Also, our juniors are gearing up for the A C T M M E, March fourth through March sixth. Southfield High's two thousand and ten graduate, Kevin Lee, has made it to the U S P. She finally received the contract he worked hard for after having a seven-and-oh fighter record. His debut fight was Saturday, February first. Last Wednesday, on National Fighting Day, Southfield had eighteen athletes sign to play sports at the next level. This is more than any other school in the state of Michigan. We had three representatives place. We had three representatives place out of district into region this past Saturday. Senior Ezekiel Baker placed third, Deion Williams placed second, and Keith Lee, who was the brother of Kevin Lee, also placed second. I would like to thank you again for giving me this wonderful opportunity to support my school at the Board of Education. Let's go Southfield, Blue Jay Sword. Uh, Mr. Cunningham couldn't be here today, so, um, I'm gonna do a report on him, and he left you guys a little message as well. Good evening, I am sorry that I could not attend today's meeting, but David has been gracious enough to fill in for me in my absence. I am in Washington DC with my fellow classmates, Gersey Wade and Dee Williams, participating in a panel discussion of Connect Safety dot org and the Safer Internet Day Department. Teams from other high schools, as well as leading social media executives, are meeting at the National Cable and Telecommunications Association Auditorium to raise awareness of online safety issues, as well as foster the positives and eliminate the negatives as it relates to internet use. I hope it goes well, and I'll be back next month. Here's the University High School report. The University High School slash U Prep PTA has awarded Mr. Merlin Wells with the PTA Foundation Day Award for this year. Mr. Wells, who is a PTA fundraising chair, works tirelessly with his committee to coordinate PTA fundraising, so congratulations to him. Also, congrats to the following University High School slash U Prep students for their recognition and participation in two thousand and fourteen Peace Award Celebration. The two thousand and fourteen M L K Youth Essay Contest winners, DeAndre Davis, class of two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and fourteen's M L K Youth Service winners, winners are Kayla Dobbie, two thousand and fifteen, Alexis Hobbs, two thousand and eighteen, Raymond Johnson, two thousand and sixteen, and Leslie King, two thousand and fifteen. M L K's two thousand and fourteen participants were Brandon Davis and Thomas Calhoun, two thousand and eighteen. Now onto things happening around school. Our Green Club is going, is doing a jean drive for the media this week and have collected about three jeans so far. University High School Students, Students' Congress is selling pizza kits all through the month of February. Also, this week, it's National Arts Society's Random Acts of Kindness Week. I can't reveal exactly what we have planned for this week, but this year's sticky notes, last year's sticky notes were inspir, were inspirational messages on lockers and awarded candy to random people. Um, I would like to thank you again for letting Gregory support you guys at the Board of Education, and have a nice night.
This is Mr. Matt Green of Southfield Laker High School.
Good evening. Eight students from Southfield's DECA program attended the DECA Sports and Entertainment Conference in Orlando, Florida last week. The CEO of NASCAR was the keynote speaker. He discussed marketing strategies and other successful business campaigns the league was engaged in over the past two years. They also firsthand, how many, they also saw firsthand how many sports entertainment groups, how sports and entertainment groups operate. Over five hundred DECA high school students from across the country attended. Teacher, Ms. Tori Moss, and the class to talk on this team, collected two hundred jeans for the charity group, Jeans for Teens. Teacher, Mr. Jeff Kenworth, will take the Southfield Laker High School C Club to Alpine Valley again this Saturday. The Lady Chargers defeated North Bonnington last night, they are eight and two, and lead and play with Carson on Wednesday at home for the share of the league title. The Lady Chargers defeated Carson at their place earlier this year for their only defeat. Wednesday, we get a rare boys' game, boys and girls' rugby doubleheader night. The boys will play Southfield High School at four, while the girls play Carson at five thirty. Please come and show your support. The Student Congress and National Arts Society welcome the eighth graders from Thompson and Burning Middle Schools the past two days at Laker. The eighth graders will butt in and were given the chance to be the school up close. Thursday, Mr. Jeff Martin will sponsor Boys' Day at Laker. The district's elementary and middle school students will rehearse and perform on Laker's stage under the guidance of the Laker staff and students. And last but not least, the Laker band participated in the MSBOA district this past Saturday. Lester Brown and Yamaya Woods received Division One rating. Darrin Jackson and Naomi Thomas received Division Two rating under the direction of Mr. Allison. Thank you, have a good night.
I would like to thank Mr. Cunningham, uh, Mr. Cole for bringing the report of Mr. Cunningham to us. Thank you very much. Now, uh, it's, we will go to the reporter, superintendents. She's still with us. Yes? Yes. I'd like to bring everyone's attention to the art that's in the room this evening. If you look at our back wall, you will see that our art is from Vandenberg, the World Cultural Academy. The art teacher there is Ms. Julie Wolf, and I don't know if Julie, Julie could not be with us this evening, but I think her principal is here, so stand up, take a bow. And I wanna thank you to all of our art teachers. You know, when I walk by this room, I see them in here, and next thing I know, I have new art on the wall. They make sure that each month, we have some stimulating artwork there, so thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Carla Gaddis from Stevenson Elementary to Napoleon. I would like for her to share with the board and the community a fascinating project that she did with her students. Oh, you brought students, fantastic.
All right. Okay. It is our honor to, um, come up and present for the board, and of course, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson. This is, um, I'd like to introduce, first of all, the people that will be speaking. I'm Carla Gaddis. This is Donna Pongo Vance. We have Zania Latimore, Yara Tucker, and Caleb Burke. And Mrs. Pongo Vance and I had a vision, and we really wanted to, um, kind of just give our students more exposure with some of the things that were going on in our neighborhood, our community, and just around the world. And so, we got together and labored over this for a whole summer, and under the direction of our principal, Sandra LaPereira, came up with our version of the Stevenson Elementary Career Fair. And so I'm gonna have the students talk a little bit more about that.
We would like to present to you our two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen Stevenson Elementary School Career Fair.
Um, our career fair objectives and goals, the Stevenson Elementary School Career Fair was created to expose our students to various careers that are available to them. And also, we've invited our business partners, community leaders, and parents to share their experiences in the fields of expertise.
Lower elementary students learn about fire safety and fire prevention. They also learn about what a firefighter does to help keep others safe. Stevenson students were able to listen to various careers that local community partners shared. We learned about an author, a lawyer, and a dentist. Fifth graders learned about furthering their educational goals from an Oakland Community College counselor. We even saw members of selfish Air Force base as they shared their career experiences. Davidson parents, Davidson parents came, came out on full force to share their various jobs with our students. They shared careers such as construction site manager, triple-A Michigan insurance investigator, fine English interpreter, photographer and videographer, and human resources manager from, and accounting firm, and a clear channel radio one promoter.
We all loved meeting and listening to the wonderful Fox Two News reporters, Tann Asher and James Carr. We learned what it is like to report on serious weather conditions and investigative reporting. We also learned they attended Michigan State University with our principal, Ms. LaPereira.
Go Green.
Finally, finally, the peace day with the cops. We got to learn a little about our black history. Mr. Raymond Randolph Jr. told us all about how he was a freedom rider in the South since the nineteen sixties. We also learned the importance of standing up for what we believe in, no matter what.
Now, take a look at our Career Fair video.
We have so many, uh, students here to come out and share their careers. Today, we had Mr. Raymond Randolph Jr., and he was a freedom fighter. He was one of the brave people that traveled down south and helped to fight the Jim Crow laws. I thought it was really important that our students, uh, learn a little bit more about that and be able to see a civil rights icon while we're living. Um, they've heard stories about it, they've heard their grandparents talking about it, but they've never actually gotten a chance to, to meet and hear the story from that person. And so when I got the opportunity to do that, I thought I wanted to share that with my students.
Somewhat low-key and unassuming, Randolph embraces his place in history and hopes to inspire future generations to be active in civil and human rights initiatives.
As far as the freedom riders are concerned, you know, again, the Lord was looking after me and decided that twenty-nine of the individuals that he would take to the Supreme Court of the United States would include me. And out of four hundred and thirty individuals, now, there were people like John Lewis, Congressman, uh, in that twenty-nine. Uh, and then there were Hank Thomas, these were the individuals on that first bus who was set on fire and so forth, saw the night came, eight buses later. And, uh, and all of that's a part of history, you know, the, the documentation on, on Captain Ray, what he said to me, and, uh, what he, what he did, and all of that, so forth and so on. And it's there for the kids, the grandkids, and their family. To learn more about various special events organized by Southfield Public Schools, visit southfield.k12.m i dot u s.
Ms. Gaddis, I wanna thank you so much for coming and bringing your students. You know, we talk about bringing a real-world context into schools, and this is a perfect example of how we do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Did you bring any parents with you?
I'm sorry?
Did you bring any parents with you?
Uh, I do, I have the parents of the children that spoke.
Can they stand up and be recognized? At this time, I have a presentation for the board, which is an update on our counseling initiative. If you'll remember, last spring, I came to the board and we were doing an audit of our counseling curriculum here in the district. We, this is led by Dr. Yvonne Callaway, who is a professor of counseling and leadership from Eastern Michigan University. She came in and she did an audit of our curriculum and the state curriculum model to see where the gap was. She did this work with the help of a group of counselors that met all summer to not only look at the results, but to chart our path. Our end goal is to redesign the counseling curriculum here in Southfield Public Schools. One of our lead counselors, who has been working on this project, is Mr. Harry Patton, and he's here today to provide an update.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to say, um, farewell to Dr. Cook Robinson, you've been a wonderful superintendent, and, uh, thank you for your influence and your guidance, so we're gonna definitely miss you, so.
Thank you.
Well, in terms of counseling curriculum and redesign, uh, we did meet during the summer, and we are meeting throughout the year. As a matter of fact, we met in this room today. Okay. So, right now, this is our proposed vision. We're in the process of bringing all the counseling departments together, um, middle schools and high schools, and as you can see, that's the vision that we're proposing. And then the mission, now reading the mission, the Southfield Public Schools Counseling Program's mission in partnership with families is to provide social, emotional, and academic support to all students by offering a variety of resources and individual and group interventions that will prepare students for their careers and long-term goals. Now, here are some of the objectives, and when you're looking at systemic program, curriculum for counseling, these are some components that you, you have to have. First of all, it has to be systemic, it has to reach all students, and no longer can we just put out fires and, and tackle problems as they come, but we have to be intentional in reaching students and guiding students in terms of that, that preparation. that preparation. Counselor, as teacher of social, emotional development and college career readiness. College and career readiness. So, that includes academic preparation, character development, test preparation, college application preparation, and completion. We also will work to strengthen communication between the students and their parents. Encourage independence, self-advocacy, self-responsibility, and resiliency in students. And also encourage the proper use of technology. And to do that, counselors have been tackling technology themselves and incorporating technology more in reaching the students. So, you know, we're in the digital age, so you have to be able to reach the students on email, on social media, wherever they are. So, we are always accessible to the students, especially with technology. So, as an example, websites. So, some of the counselors are getting on board, and they would like to create their own websites so they can have a fountain of information available to families and Having videos available, so when we meet with the students, we can have follow-up. So, the students and their parents will be privy to the information. And using technologies such as Edmodo, which mirrors Facebook in a way, as you can see they're blue and white. However, you can run this just like a class. So, you can create assignments, you can create reflections for the students so that even when you're not in front of the students, students can relate to their counselors and communicate with their counselors. So, these tools, these are some of the tools that we've used. Even career cruising. Counselors are working to develop assignments so that students can reflect on activities that we do with them. So, they're not just hearing lectures, they actually get feedback, and they document. And so, all of these items that you see are also used for data. So, we can track what the students are doing and what we are doing with the students. So, when we did all that meeting during the summer, and what we're meeting about now is we're implementing Phase One. Okay? So, Phase One starts with the ninth grade only. And so, with Phase One, we're talking about strength-based school counseling. And that's basically, in a nutshell, flipping the script. Okay? So, you want to say the glass is half-empty, the glass is half-full. So, we're kind of promoting the half-full philosophy with the students. And just like with testing, instead of saying the students, 80% of the students scored higher than you, you scored higher than 20% of the students. So, it flips the script so that the students see their strength in everything. So, we've started meeting with the ninth grade. Most of the schools, I believe, have already met with them. All the schools have met at least once, and we will meet approximately twice each month, and that's with all of the ninth graders. So, our goal is to have eight contacts by May or June with all of the ninth graders. One of the things that we did with the students is the Southfield Public Schools Counseling Personal Strength Survey. All of the high schools use the same survey to kind of gather data to see where the students are. And we use some of this data to come up with our lessons and our presentations and our group meetings with the students. And this is a sample. We have a group database where all the counselors can access through a Google Drive. We store all of our information in folders, so it's always accessible to all the counselors. And we also have folders and documents for all the counselors in Edmodo. And this is a sample of what we gained from the survey. This is just one school here. But all of the schools have the same data that we can use. So, we start off here and have our baseline data, and as we go through the process with our eight contacts, then we can do a post-assessment to see how the students have grown. And that's a little update of where we're going. And we hope to move throughout the middle schools and have them come on board so we'll be a comprehensive counseling program that will reach all of the students. Yeah, that's, okay, so we're doing that, that's currently in the curriculum. So, as far as, each school has something a little bit different they do in terms of voucher aid, workshops, scholarships. And this is touching more on the social-emotional behavior. That's what the audit revealed, is that we needed more social-emotional to make the students whole, as opposed to just focusing on career, academic, college counseling. So, this component is being infused into what the counselors are currently doing.
Good evening. Tonight, we're bringing the First Amendment to the 13-14 budget. You know, the processes that we create the budget, we do the budget projection early in the previous year. So, May and June, we're projecting what we're going to have as far as budget numbers for the next fiscal year without a lot of the information. Can't hear me? Okay. Is that better? Sorry. Okay. So, the processes, we start early in the year, May-June. We have to do our best guess on most of the information, our student count, our property values, what state aid is going to look like. Most of those things we don't have. So, we do our best guess at that time, put together our budget. So, then during the year, sometimes during the middle of the year, and then again at the end of the year, we do amendments as we get more information as it comes in. So, tonight, we're bringing the First Amendment. Most notable changes are, the revenue is down about $1,005,000 from what we had projected. And this is mostly due to the fact that we have 68 left students. Part of this is the new Section 25 in the state aid where students can move around during the year. Previously, we had two counts. You would count them in the fall and then in the winter, and that was it, and your count was stable. Now, these children are able to be prorated throughout the year. So, we really don't know even at this time how this is going to end up at the end of the year. So, we're still trying to get a hold of this and see how it's going to work, how many districts are going to do this, how the ISB is going to be able to pull all this information together. But at this time, we're down 68 less than we had estimated at the beginning of the year. The other thing is the Special Ed state aid is based on your expenditures for the previous year. And what happens with the state aid is if your expenditures are down, you, the percentage of that that you get in state aid is down, but then they also go back one year and double that. So, if you lose money this year in your state aid, you get a double hit on it. So, this year, it was like $500,000 that we were down. So, those two things together drop our revenue down about $1,005,000 from what we had estimated earlier. And the expenditures, large changes, we were down about $700,000 in positions and $1,002,000 in benefits. We always, when we do our estimate or our projection at the beginning of the year, we try to hit every possible position that we could possibly need for the next year so that we're always being ultra-conservative. So, that way, no matter what happens, we're not going to be caught in a position where we don't have enough money to cover it. So, this year, so far from what we know, we're going to have about $700,000 less in positions still. And the big change in the benefits was a part of our state aid that we get to reimburse us for MESSPERS, which is our Michigan Public School Employee Retirement System. The governor decided to take money away from our state aid category, or our per pupil money. And he put a lot of that in categoricals. One of those that we didn't know for sure if we were going to get again this year was the state reimbursement for MESSPERS. So, this year, we are getting it, we know that for sure now, so that's $641,000. So, we were able to take that and put that into the budget. Then we also estimated about 10% in our benefits increase, so we put those out at the beginning of the year. Now, we have actual numbers, so we're doing a little bit better there. And we were able to decrease our unemployment expense, too. We've added a little bit to our contracted services, purchase services, and most of that was, had to do with a nursing contracted nursing. With Special Ed, we don't have a lot of control. When students have IEPs, we have to hire staff to cover that. So, at this time, you know, we just add it into the budget as we know it's coming. And we also added in 1% to our transportation budget with Durham. When we brought the contract, I think it was two months ago we brought the contract for renewal, we added in 1%. But what Durham is doing is next year, they're giving us a rebate of $100,000, which will more than make up for this increase. The big increase to supplies, we're adding about $1,005,000, $1,006,000 for a textbook purchase, the band uniform purchase that you saw. But we were able to offset some of that by decreasing our maintenance and custodial supplies. So, we're really tightening up there. When we renewed our contract with EnviroClean for custodial, we had them start purchasing our supplies. And so far, that has turned out to be a good thing for us. So, we have been able to cut that supply line down. Technology is another place we added into the budget. And the good thing about this is, just in this budget, we're adding 2.5 million in capital expenses, and we haven't had to go out for a bond issue. So, we're not paying interest, we're being able to do this. This is what we've been building up for in all the past years as we've been cutting and saving so that we can do these capital expenses from general funds. So, we're going to add into technology, and our IT director will explain to you a little bit later exactly what we're doing. We're going to purchase to get a level of technology in every one of our classrooms and also to start updating our computers, which are past their years of service, I guess is a good way to put it. You usually rotate about every four or five years, you want to rotate out and get new computers. A lot of ours are over that age. We were able to decrease our miscellaneous expenses by about $150,000. We took out a claims and judgment line that we had in there. That's in case that we have any lawsuits against us that we think may come out of our budget. And at this time, I don't see that that's going to be a liability, so we took that out. And then we had to add in a little bit more to our Special Ed tuition. And again, we don't have a lot of control over the Special Ed costs, so that kind of ebbs and flows throughout the year. So, in total, the net change to the budget from our projection is 2.3 million more coming out of the fund balance. And that will leave us with a projected fund balance of $10,865,000. Any questions? I bore you to death. Okay, well, we do have our IT director, but before they come up, I just want to say to Dr. Juanica Cook Robinson that she is going to be sorely missed. It has been such a pleasure and an honor to work for her, and I personally have grown and learned so much from working with you. And I have to apologize for not remembering my name at the beginning of, but I was kind of flustered over the whole announcement, so. So, at this time, if we could have our IT department come up, and they'll also give you an update on where we're at with the capital purchases that you had already approved.
A couple of quick updates on the technology front tonight. One is, before you, we have a contract between South, a proposed contract between Southfield Public Schools and Berkeley Schools. It relates to phones, the phones at the Kennedy Center. So, we've been in discussions with Berkeley Schools on some of their needs to add a tenant in that space, and this proposal would provide them phones in their classrooms and then also the offices. We do have these phones in stock. As you know, we've closed buildings over the last couple of years, we've taken those phones and put them back in the inventory, so we have these phones available. So, this proposal would provide phones to Berkeley classrooms over at the Kennedy Center. And it was, it's a cost-recovery model, so we built in the budget to cover the one-time cost that it would take to get these phones set up, and then the monthly reoccurring fees. So, the one-time cost of $4,000, and then a monthly reoccurring cost for a cost-recovery model of $250 per month. So, that contract is before the board tonight. So, I'll let Les give us a project update on the projects that we approved last month that are well underway, and we have some updates. So, Les.
Last month, we had three projects that were approved. Those are major projects that we have going on right now. The first is getting, again, back to the base level of technology in every classroom. We're putting, ensuring that at the end of this data projector project, each classroom has at least a data projector mounted to the ceiling and a computer in the classroom. So, we have 140 classrooms that are getting a data projector, an iPad, and Apple TV. Installation began this weekend at McIntyre's. We'll continue building by building for the next three or four weeks and is on target for completion at the end of March. Our second project is a network upgrade. We talked about this again at the last board meeting. We had, we did an inventory and kind of analysis of where Southfield was currently, and we've been able to bring a proposal forth to upgrade the speed to every closet within the district. That project is underway. We have the contractor, NetTech, has all the equipment and is doing the staging and setup at their facility this week. That installation is going to begin next Monday while everybody's on break, and is scheduled to be completed by next Friday. The third project is the video, upgrade of the video surveillance system. At this point, we've had the vendor, ROK, come in and do a walkthrough of every building, identify every security camera currently in place. They've noted its location on a floor plan and is coming up with some detailed drawings so that we have some good documentation moving forward. We'll be in conversations with them this week to schedule the updates of each of them.
Any questions on that update before we move to the next piece? Okay, the next piece is the two purchases before you today. The one purchase is to upgrade, as we talk about the capital refresh, like Debbie had indicated, is very important to get the enterprise on a capital refresh cycle. You know, should, we should target four to six years on replacing all the desktop computers or computers in the district. We have approximately 4,000 computers, and the majority of those are over the five-year mark. So, the proposal for you tonight, before you tonight, is to upgrade 1,000 units. That will be a good start at the capital refresh plan. And with this capital refresh plan, the opportunity before we have before you is to take advantage of a program through the state of Michigan through the Technology Readiness Infrastructure Grant, TRIG. So, this purchase would correlate with those dates of TRIG, which is in mid-April, the window would open up. The state, off MD, is doing a procurement effort to secure different units, different units that will be available for us to purchase. And really, the incentive to purchase off of that cooperative bid is up to $100 for device back in future incentives. There's $7.5 million available to the state that the state has put in, that the Department of that has available. So, that rebate will really vary on how many units are purchased by the school district around the state. So, that's why I say up to $100. So, that's the, you know, a good first step at 1,000 units. The second proposal before you is the purchase of iPads and Apple TVs for each one of the classrooms across the district. So, as we wanted to get that base level of technology in every classroom with a data projector and Apple TV last month, really going back and looking at how can we finish it off? How can we ensure that every classroom has an interactive piece? And also has a piece of really what the Apple ecosystem has brought into education with the over 65,000 apps available to our educators. So, the proposal is to provide each teacher with an iPad and also an Apple TV. And again, those devices, the iPads, will be able to be secured off of the TRIG, the TRIG grant available to us in April. So, those purchases will happen as soon as the TRIG window opens up and we're able to purchase off of those cooperative purchase. Any questions? Well, we appreciate the board's support of these major initiatives over the last couple of months. It really is going to take Southfield, you know, continue the investment that Southfield has always had in their technology systems, and that will carry us into the future as we progress forward. So, thank you.
I wanted the community to know that we did have study sessions, usually, Mr. Buchanan might interject that, that we definitely do have study sessions on this. We're not just, you know, rubber-stamp kind of board or anything. But we got a lot of that addressed and asked in some of our study sessions, which are open to the public, and I just wanted to make sure the community knew that much.
And again, I think it should be stated that while I was at the, President and I was at the Michigan Association of School Boards training classes this weekend, a lot of school districts are going through asking their community to issue bonds, or issuing bonds. We are not. We have been great students, allow our money, and we're paying cash. So, we thank you for your support, everyone. So, we thank you for your support, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This will keep Southfield in the forefront for a long time.
And the rest of my report is contained in the consent agenda. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Joan Lee Berry for Human Resources and Labor Relations. And two items, we have the consent agenda as well as revision of board policies, which is to, simply to update a contact name from David Turner to Dan Bulley. Thank you.
We have tonight, Mr. Rudy Hopps, Representative Rudy Hopps, our representative from the state here. So, I'm interrupting the sequence a little bit.
Good evening. Madam President, School Board Trustees, I really appreciate the opportunity to come here tonight to be able to present a special tribute to a friend. And I do not use that term lightly when I say friend. You know, I won't read the tribute, but I do want to just share just a few thoughts, a few words of appreciation to Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson. Sitting here on the board, and I was a school board member from 2004 to 2008, and we've taken many votes as a school board, tough votes, lots of tough votes as a school board. And I've taken hundreds of vote as a state legislator. But I can say that the one vote that I'm most proud of, the one vote that I'm most proud of was hiring Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson. And that's, she has meant so much to this district, to our kids, our parents, our community. She stepped into that position with vision, with determination, very decisive about where this district needs to be. And as a board, we support her. As a community, we support her. As teachers, we supported her. And we really appreciate where you have taken us to because you have taken us to places where I'll be very honest with you, I didn't think we were going to see in the near future. When I'm in Lansing, people talk about our school district. People talk about our superintendent. People talk about our teachers. And that's because of the leadership that we have at the top. You're going to be sorely missed, not only by the House family, not only by the House family, I mean that for everyone, but you're going to be missed by all families here in Southfield. So, I want to make sure that you have this because wherever you land, I just want to make sure that this is hanging up in your office somewhere and I will come and check. If you cannot move far enough, well, I would not come and check on you. So, I just wanted to say, we really appreciate everything you've done for this district. And we just want to make sure that we honor you on this special occasion. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think I got tissue up there. I asked for motion with the action of the, I asked for motion to open.
Yes, I will continue. And I would be remiss in saying that this would be a very, very short moment for the curriculum presentation, but I'd like to have the teachers to come to the podium as we share with the community what we shared recently with our board members about the tremendous review of instructional materials and textbooks that occurred over the past two to three months. And we have been bringing tidbits of the process to the community. But it's now time for the teachers to come and share because this is for our teachers and for our students. So, I'd like for Mr. Chapp and Ms. Dean to come to the podium with representatives from our teaching staff. And while they're coming, I'd just like to also say, because Dr. Cook Robinson, you are very important in my life and have done. And for the past nine years, you've been my mentor and my friend. And I want to publicly thank you for that. And as we continue forward, you will always be dear to our hearts. And so, I'm going to now turn it over to Mr. Chapp, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction.
Good evening, Dr. Cook Robinson, members of the board. I would be remiss if this is not the last time I can say, you, Dr. Wood, I had promised to keep our comments to be brief. That's a pretty tall feat. But I do want to take this woman to say congratulations. You've been a wonderful leader. You've been a great mentor to me personally as I've grown in the district. And I just want to say thank you and wish you the very best in your next and future endeavors. With that said, when we came to the board in December of 2013, we said that we were going to embark over the next month and a half on a journey, if you will, to evaluate what's out there, the newest and the latest and the greatest educational resources, e-textbooks, curriculum, so on and so forth. So, myself, my counterpart, Ms. Dean, wanted to make sure that you heard and the community heard about the results of the textbook material review from the teachers, from the person on the ground in our classrooms and their observations, their recommendations, things that they found out through the course of that examination process. And so, we're first going to start with representatives from mathematics, then English Language Arts, science, and finally, social studies. So, with that said, I would like to call Ms. Banks and the other members of the math team. Any comments and observation that you have?
Good evening. I am, can't talk right now, I'm sorry. I'm Jessica Banks, the math coordinator for the district. And in reviewing the textbooks with our team, one of the big questions that came up was, what is any different from what we currently have? We had to do things differently with Common Core particularly coming out. And so, we want to stretch, stretch our students. We want them to engage more with literacy, include that into the mathematics curriculum. And so, for us, we went with something we've been piloting already, which is Frameboard. Frameboard is a program by the college board, an AP, a pre-AP program. It prepares students to go beyond just knowing how to answer a question two plus two, but put into a context. And so, we are very excited about the possibility of using Frameboard. For our statistics book, we went with a, a book that also incorporates a lot of the Common Core strategies, more reading, more project-based approach to it.
For ELA, I'm going to ask Talia to come up as well as Angela Swift.
Good evening. I am Talia Williams-Cutter, the English PD facilitator for the district. And I am pleased to say that the middle and high school English teams joined hands in this process. With that being said, they both decided upon Hardcore Collection. So, our students will be utilizing the same publisher, middle and high school, which will also allow for a dual transition as students move from middle to high school. They'll be familiar with the close and critical reading. They'll be familiar with the grammar that is infused with this program as well as the various programs such as E-Rater and TurnItUp.com. And these, what this is, this is, these are programs that will allow the students to submit their essays, to gain feedback prior to submitting it to their teachers. And the teachers can also track this. It's also a program where the teachers can keep track of whether or not the students have played dry in their essays with TurnItUp.com. Common Core is essential, and it was an essential aspect of this decision. And what we really, really like overall about collections, opposed to stretching a mile wide with information and just going an inch deep, collection may go an inch wide, but it's due the mile deep in terms of information that our students need to ensure their success in the future.
I'm Angela Swift. I worked on the ELA K5 group and we selected McGraw-Hill Wonders. And what we were looking for, we were especially looking for text that was going to allow students to have texts at different levels so that all of our students, while learning the same strategies, were doing it at a level that was right for them. And so, this program really allowed that. It also had an online component in which the text was available at all those different levels as well. So, that was very encouraging. The other part that we really liked was that the Common Core was, it was circulating throughout the entire book. And the strategies were written so that teachers could first model them, then have students work with them through guided instruction, and then have them work independently on their own adult strategies. What we also liked was that there was a writing component that was intertwined within the program so that they were consistently writing about what they were reading, which is important to the Common Core. So, that is what we chose.
Good evening. One of the other components of this new literacy program was the amount of differentiated instruction opportunities that is just awesome because, for example, the leveled readers, even if you have kids that are not quite on grade level, the other kids, if you're doing small group instruction, the other kids don't realize that that child who's not on grade level is reading something that has fewer words because a lot of the book covers are the same. The only difference is that the teacher knows that the spines are color-coded. But that's just something to help build that self-esteem of that child that might be struggling. But it also addresses the child that is on grade level as well as one that needs more of a challenge. So, that was something, as a teacher who has students with a wide range of abilities, I was looking for something that would address those needs.
Hi. Kim Stone and Cory Klee-Schmidt.
We've got a whole little team. Hi, I'm Kimberly Wardell-Stone. I'm a teacher, science teacher at Southland High School and also PD facilitator for the Division of Instruction. And we had a strong team. We made, we chose K through five texts and high school, nine through 12. We did not do middle school because we, there was a purchase not too long ago where those books are still relevant. But rather than me talk about the whole process, please understand that all of our choices were chosen with great care, with the thought that the new science curriculum is coming, the next generation, science standards, the acronym NGSS. And the text that we have chosen, along with the ancillaries and materials, will allow us to meet our students now with regards to the science content and all their abilities, but also leave us in a position where we can grow as the curriculum changes, we'll still be able to use these materials and address the curriculum as it unfolds. But for right now, I'll introduce Cory.
Good evening. I work with Kim on the science curriculum and I particularly work with the K5 curriculum. We selected a textbook by Pearson for the K through five curriculum. There were several factors that we looked at. One in particular was just the depth of knowledge in the curriculum. We wanted to make sure that it was reaching students at all levels, that the material for asking students to recall, to be engaged in the curriculum, to infer in the curriculum. So, there were several components that we looked at. As Kim mentioned, we looked at it needing the NGSS practices. Is it asking students to model? Is it asking students to apply skills that they're learning throughout the content? Another huge factor was the online component. The online component was major. It had virtual labs that the students could participate in. So, even if the teacher didn't have the particular materials there to set up the lab, which in the materials, the labs were very easy, user-friendly for a teacher. But the online component allows students to actually interact. They're not just sitting there watching videos. They're interacting with the lab. They're plugging in data. It is so user-friendly for a teacher. It is very user-friendly for parents. The online component is so engaging for the student, for the teacher, and for the parent. So, there are many reasons why we chose that book and you'll see as they start to roll out into the classroom, what a great resource they are.
And we have Lori, Lori Tunic, she was going on high school.
Good evening, everyone. I sat on the high school committee for science. And we looked at many, 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 many books. And it was, it was quite overwhelming what we had to deal with. We chose a Holt book for biology. We chose a Holt book for physics. And we actually, the book I'm most excited about is the Dum-Dal books for chemistry. For those of you that took chemistry in high school, in college, probably had a Dum-Dal textbook, Dum-Dal and his white Dum-Dal. This is their first book that's ever written for high school and it is phenomenal. It is just what we needed at the high school level. So, I'm already super excited about using these books and already planning to make it happen.
At this time, we're going to have our social studies team come up. We're going to start with our elementary team, followed by our secondary team.
Good evening. My name's Pat McGonan. I teach at Vanderbilt. And we reviewed, or we chose, rather, the Pearson Social Studies book, It's My World. And one of the most enhancing features was that each child will have a portfolio that could follow him, that will follow him from K through five. They create their own story in terms of knowledge. The social studies text not only addresses the need for social studies, but reading skills as well. So, across this curriculum, it's filed as well. And it is perfectly aligned with the Common Core, which we were quite happy with. It's a great resource I've already begun using in my classroom and the kids are enjoying it. We've shared it across lines, across grade lines, and everyone's quite pleased. It's a tool that will replace an antiquated text that we've been using. And it's much more user-friendly. Children have an opportunity to interact with it. The most enhancing feature with the online component is that it has a 24-hour access for parents and students and teachers as well. The exact same text that they'll hold a hard copy of in their hands in the classroom, they'll be able to access online. Parents will be able to contact the textbook company. They have a 24-hour hotline that parents will be able to contact no matter the hour to assist the child with whatever concept is being addressed.
In addition, we looked at the curriculum at every grade level. We were trying to find a program that would help build a foundation for our students, K through five, so they will be prepared for middle school, high school, and college. We wanted to find a program that had our third and fourth grade new social studies curriculum materials. Currently, our materials are different at different grade levels and they're not fully aligned to the new curriculum. So, we were very pleased to find the new curriculum fully aligned and Michigan also contributed to this series. We did share, as Pat mentioned, with all of our colleagues at every grade level. And we are both very excited. I have begun using this curriculum also in my classroom.
Good evening. I'm Matthew Hurrell. I teach those studies at Southfield Lethrum. Just first of all, thank you for making this investment in the kids and our schools. Much needed, much appreciated, and they will be well-used and well-taken care of. I assure you that. The middle school and high school curriculums have changed quite a bit recently. Textbooks have kept up with that. Textbooks have come a long way. We used to get excited if a publisher just had a website. That was a novelty. Not anymore. They have to do a lot more than that and they... That was announced. Not anymore. They have to do a lot more than that and they do. We use several criteria. There's a lot of competition. There's a lot of good books out there, quite frankly. But what we ended up going with, I know at the eighth grade level for American history, it's now a two-year sequence, eighth and ninth grade. And we also are investing in Econ and Gov., which is 11th grade. Those textbooks are, first of all, well-written, well-presented, readable, the correct lexile for the grade level, et cetera. But the online component was what separated some from the others, both for students and teachers. And at the high school level, another deal-breaker that eliminated a few titles, but is why we went with one, is that not only is it available online 24/7, as was mentioned earlier, but the high school version is also downloadable through devices. So you don't even need online access. You can download it to your phone or your iPad and you can carry wherever you go. Our kids love their devices. If we actually get them reading social studies on their devices, that'll be a victory. But again, thank you for this investment. We can't wait and the kids are going to love it too.
On behalf of the entire textbook adoption committee, we do want to thank you. This is another example of the tremendous leadership from Dr. Cook Robinson. So thank you for your support. And Dr. Linda Wood, thank you guys for recognizing and valuing our students and making our students the center of all the decisions we make and all of our financial investments. And also thank you to the board for your support. This was a tremendous team of teacher leaders and teacher experts and we're very grateful to be allowed to bring this information to you this evening. So thank you very much. Thank all of you.
Before you go, there was one aspect of the books that I think the community needs to know about and that's the ability to reproduce the book. Could you explain that? Because we got into a lot of conversations over the years about that very.
Absolutely, absolutely. And one thing I would just add on briefly is that these texts that are being recommended for board approval are in alignment with our teaching plans, have been deeply aligned with our instructional thrusts, have been really supported by Superintendent Dr. Wood with differentiated instruction, UBD. Often cases, these textbooks have actually been co-written by those visionaries within the education field, specifically with technology. Most of, if not all of the textbooks that have been recommended to the board this evening have an imprint of 2012 or 2013. What does that mean? It simply means that these textbooks are compliant with HTTP5 or basically Web 5.0, meaning that they're web-based. You can use them on a smartphone. You can use them on an iPad, a Chromebook, a PC, a Mac. So what that does is it greatly expands the opportunities where students can access this information. Second of all, you lose two portability. They are downloadable. Whether it's the textbooks themselves, students can carry them wherever they go. Also ancillary materials, supports, worksheets, all this comes with that. Now with that said, there will be an education component that needs to take place with our teachers, our students, and the community. But I think it's really, it puts us in the vanguard of the county and I don't say that lightly. It does put us in the vanguard of the county because of the scope and the breadth of the adoption. This is a K-12 Core 4 recommendation. So I think that puts our students in good stead. It certainly puts us in good stead and the community, school district, with our constituents. Any other questions?
And Representative Hobbs, you can go back and tell the governor, let that one model I may agree with him on. Right? Anyplace, anywhere, anytime, we're there.
I just want to say that that does end my report for this evening. But I will just add one comment because it's imperative that our parents are aware of all this. So we will be having forums because to have our teachers come in and literally share with you what these resources are, how they're making a difference, how the teaching is different, and how to access the e-text that's available for every child is a tremendous, tremendous opportunity that our district has moved forward with and I'm very excited about that also. So look forward to those dates that will be forthcoming very, very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wood, Dr. Wood, and Mr. Chat. I want to tell you that the reason we're able to purchase these books now at a tremendous cost is because Dr. Cook Robinson had the foresight to plan years ago to start saving the funds to purchase these books. And that's why we're able to do it, to keep our students up to date in the contemporary curriculum. So thank you also, Dr. Cook Robinson.
I had a lot of help though.
A lot of help. A lot of help. Right there. Well, that's it and so on. I would like someone to open and approve for the consensus agenda. I forgot BUCY. What a BUCY report.
So this is the...
I was there too.
The BUCY Center for Early Childhood Education Head Start Report. Within that is the Policy Council Notes from the February 10, 2014 meeting. There are, February 2014, there are 240 students currently enrolled at BUCY, 79 students on the waiting list, 34 dropped. And we, I want to make clear that that's like a comprehensive number, not each month, not within 30 a month. So it was three since my last report. Last month I reported out that we had a very low ADA, average daily attendance, to about 47%. It turns out that the data management system that we purchased last year, or approved, I should say, was having some technical issues where it was including Fridays and holidays and our students at BUCY don't go on Fridays, obviously holidays. So that's where that low percentage came from. As a reminder, 85% is the mandate from the federal government for average daily attendance. Currently working on updating all those children's individual attendance files and the IA will report the actual ADA for February and previous month, next month's meeting. Services, 17 children are being serviced with individual education plans. Three referrals have been submitted and we have met our 10% funded enrollment. Our Child Adult Care Food Program, meals served 1,064 breakfasts, 1,363 lunches, 1,052 snacks, and is currently being audited. BUCY receives a great start to quality rating and this certifies that BUCY is a quality-rated program in this state. Governance Training Reminder for Board Members is Monday, February 24th and Tuesday, the 25th of February. A core need not be present and that's from 9 to 3 here at JWE. The kindergarten crawl and self-assessment, on February 5th and 6th, 126 children and families participated in the kindergarten crawl, visited all of our elementary programs in the district. And as it relates to our self-assessment, it's underway and we will meet to wrap up this on Valentine's Day. Partnerships, BUCY has formed two new partnerships, one with the Pediatric Early Care and second with the Lazer Village Farmers Market. And I'll have more information about that one next month's meeting. And then the Empowerment Through Education Series was yesterday at BUCY and just folks who've been through a Head Start program, parents are actually getting employed and learning all the job skills by having their children in Head Start, which is just one of those things that sets Head Start apart from daycare or early youth care. And then as it relates to our financials, the Head Start Budget Report through January 31st, 2014. While that's getting pulled up, I do want to mention that this coming Thursday at BUCY is the Father Daughter Dance from 4 to 6. They have a cultural fair on the 27th from 10 to 1. And then I thought it was important, I mentioned to the board that the refunding package is due to the region on the 27th and that's very important as well. So, our program budget is $1.5 million. You can see there that non-federal is about 20%, leaving the rest of federal. Then it's a breakdown for those of you at home who can see that nice and clear of 89% of the money goes to staff costs. Training and assistance is in there, 8% for other expenditures. When we look at the status on the expenditures, we're about 47% of the way through our salary budget and we are at the 50% mark of the program. Ideally, some of these numbers you'd like to see at 90%, or I'm sorry, at 50% or better. But we'll catch up in the months to come with various expenditures. And then regarding the status on federal share, one little highlight is at the end, the donated items or services at 7%. That number might be changing. They just have to double-check on some of those numbers. The donated items should reflect speech hours. Unfortunately, they don't, so that's why it's a little bit low. But as a reminder, board members and parents and volunteers, BUCY gives credit financially for all of that time that we spend giving of volunteer hours. And the donated items and services will increase after the March 27th holistic fair and April 25th health recruitment and the two days of governance that we participate in. They'll get financial credit for that. And that is the BUCY Head Start Report.
Well, I would like a motion to open and approve the consensus agenda.
So move. Support it.
Brad Buchanan. Call for the vote.
Mr. Buchanan.
Yes.
Fred Katz.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Janice Smith.
Yes.
Frances Williams.
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Thank you. I would like a motion to open report number 5243, the Southfield High School Man Uniform Bin.
I'd love to open report 5243.
Okay, any questions, comments?
Sure.
Call for... Many good-looking men. My secretary call for the roll.
Please, Frances Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Derek Buchanan.
Yes.
Miss Katz.
Yes.
Janice again.
May I have a report to open, report number 5244, the Southfield Lethrum High School Man Uniform Bin.
So move. Support it.
Any comments? Call for the bin. Call for the roll.
Okay. Myself, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Mr. Buchanan.
Yes.
Miss Katz.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Janice again.
Thank you. Could I have someone open report number 5245, professional development contract for Thompson K-8 Academy?
So move that we open report 5245.
Any comments, questions?
Yes, I'd like to ask Ms. Lycey, who's here with us, to go to the podium and just give you an overview of what she will be doing with this consultant. I'm very pleased at the work that they initiated over at Thompson and I think this consultant is going to be a wonderful addition. Ms. Lycey and Mr. Ethan have both been trained. So when the consultant leaves, they will be able to get in and train and help support. But they are in the process of building capacity at Thompson.
Have a good one.
And this is the way we think we have to go, not only to purchase the talent each time, but to build capacity so that when they're gone, the staff and the administration can continue.
Unfortunately...
Ah!
Oh, no, it's not. I hope. All alike, from the time...
Be brief.
Yeah, I'm going to have my Ivy Coordinator to speak on my behalf. And Mr. Ethan, you are standing by the ready. Thank you.
Hello. So Dee Claus is a consultant that has been working with us. And what she's done has helped us create teacher labs within our school so that our K-2 teachers, our K-5 teachers, and our K-8 teachers are working together in each other's classrooms, looking at each other's teaching, analyzing it, seeing, okay, here's what we're doing with the kids. What do we need to do next and how are we going to do that? She's doing it through a model of, okay, the teacher, we teach, we model it for you. And then now class, we're going to do it together. We're going to try it out. And now, students, it's your time to do it on your own. And what this is doing for the students is this teaching them to live life as a reader. And once I started using this model in my classroom, it was really just eye-opening. The students were begging for reading time. And as a teacher, when you get that, it's just really inspiring. And what they're doing is it's teaching the kids how to analyze text, how to actually develop theories about characters, about themes, about settings, and then to put it all together, to talk about reading, to talk about what they're reading, to write about what they're reading, and to develop these theories that then allows them to communicate what they're reading. What Dee is doing in our classrooms is allowing teachers to develop these, this expertise so that students can partake in this learning environment. Any questions?
Thank you.
Well, could I have someone open to approve report number... Oh, the vote.
Okay. Mr. Buchanan.
Yes.
Miss Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Janice again.
Could I have a motion to open and approve report number 5247? Are we on 47?
47, 46.
I'd love to open report 5245.
46. Best Practices and Send a Resolution.
Yes. Ms. Trump. The best practices is how the Child Oracle that was added to our state aid in lieu of per pupil funding. And each year, they move the buyer just a little bit so that we have to do, it was six of seven, now it's seven of eight. So the governor can ask us to jump through different hoops to get our funding per year. So every year, we have to pass this resolution and this year, we did pass seven of the eight best practices. So that gets us $52 per pupil and a one-time grant. So this is year-to-year, we have to do this every year and it can change or go away completely. But this year, we do have seven of the eight best practices and so we're asking that you approve the resolution tonight so that we can receive our state aid. And it'll be around $360,000.
Can I ask, of the seven, which of the eight, which one are we missing?
It is, the district identifies which of the following it provides pursuant to Section 22F, SIS Ed or Health Ed. And Linda, can you speak to that?
I can speak to that. We don't have, in fact, in Oakland County, we don't have a district that is not that. They're requiring additional hours for jobs. Now, this is another unfunded mandate because if we're going to extend the time, then we need more funding to go with it so we can pay for personnel and so on. So we have decided, the superintendent's in Oakland County, that we are not going to worry about that best practice until he goes rate out of aid and then we'll have to barge some more money.
Leadership again. Thank you.
Any more questions? Call for the vote, please.
Okay, Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Miss Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Buchanan.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Janice again.
Okay, I'd like a motion to open and approve report number 5247. Come on.
Support.
Ms. Trump.
Call for, oh, sorry, question?
Ms. Trump.
So, okay, call for the vote.
Mr. Buchanan.
Yes.
Mr. Poole.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Miss Katz.
Yes.
Janice again.
I'd like a motion to open and approve... Uh, I'd like a motion to open and approve, approve report number 5248.
I move that we open...
They tend to need lease renewal.
I move that we open report 5248.
Uh, do I hear any questions?
We had a report earlier, Ryan, on that, during the technology report.
Call for the vote.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Ms. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Myself, yes. unanimous.
All right, I'd like a motion to open and approve, report number 5249, the textbook purchase.
I move that we open and approve report 5249, the textbook purchase.
Questions, comments, we just heard the report on that. No, call for the vote.
Ms. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Betty Robinson, yes. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
unanimous.
Thank you. We just heard a report on that, we probably had a very extensive review from the board the other night. Uh, I'd like someone to make a motion to open and approve report 5250, uh, the revision of board policy.
I move we open 5250.
Uh, do you have any questions? Would you like to raise them? Do you have any?
These are the policies that Ms. Newberry mentioned earlier, that the board has approved earlier this year, however, with the departure of David, it required us to change the contact name, as we discussed at the, at the study session, I'm sorry. So we will now add Mr. Bully's name with the approval of the board.
Thank you, call for the vote.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Betty Robinson, yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Fred Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
unanimous.
Uh, would someone please open the report 5251, the budget amendment.
I move to open report 5251, the budget.
Any comments, questions? Call for the vote.
Ms. Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Myself, yes. unanimous again.
Hey, I call lines for someone to open and approve report 5252, the computer purchase.
I would move that we open and approve report 5252, the computer purchase.
Uh, any questions, comments? Call for the vote.
Okay, uh, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
Ms. Katz?
Yes.
unanimous.
Uh, I call for someone to open report number 5253, the iPad purchase.
I move that we open report 5253, the...
Call for the vote.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Betty Robinson, yes. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Mr. Buchanan?
Yes.
unanimous.
I call for someone to open report number 5254, the, um, oh, they do, they do not require board action, uh, but should we open it? No, it doesn't require board action.
They can read it as...
They can read, just, okay. I call for someone to open report number...
If I may, I would like to call to everyone's attention that with the approval of the consent agenda, that you have approved Dr. Cook, uh, Dr. Linda Wood as the interim superintendent, Marcia Williams as the interim associate superintendent for curriculum and instruction, and myself as the associate superintendent for human resources and relations. Thank you.
What about the principalship at University?
That will be on next month's report.
Uh, report number 5255, also does not require, uh, report, if some purchases over $5,000. Do you have any questions for us? Well, thank you. Uh, public participation, do you have any cards for public participation? We didn't. Uh, I have a card here from Lori Tunick.
Uh, Ms. Lori Tunick has a question about, or comment about, or neither.
Neither, I mean.
We would like to note that comments are generally limited to three minutes. The board will listen to all comments but may not respond during the meeting. Comments may be referred to an administrator or the superintendent for follow-up. As a matter of fairness, speakers with complaints against individuals are asked not to mention persons by name. Complaints concerning employees should be brought to the attention of school principals or other administrators before coming to the board. Your cooperation is appreciated.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Tunick, I am the president of the Southfield Education Association. I reside at 28730 Belavista Drive. I'm sorry, I didn't make it to the regular agenda, but the FCA was given a fabulous opportunity, and I needed to share it with the board, with the public. About two weeks ago, I was contacted by the National Education Association, um, as you may know, they do a program called Read Across America. Uh, Read Across America is making four stops in Michigan, and Southfield was chosen as one of them. They will be at our district, and when I say they, I'll tell you they are in a second. Um, they will be at our district on March 3rd, and take you to Perry John. We will be going to Bannenberg, and we will be using the media center there. The president of the National Education Association at Santa Rosa will be there. Rudy Combs is already committed to come as well. Dennis Gregory will be invited, Gary Peters will be invited, the mayor of Southfield, the mayor of Laker Village will be invited, Delta Dental is the sponsor, they're the money people behind the whole thing. Um, the students of grades one, two, and three at Bannenberg will all receive gray cats and hat hats. They will all be getting books and toothbrushes and all kinds of little tachys that they are bringing, that I actually delivered to my office next week. Um, and all of the staff will also be getting hats and all kinds of goodies. Um, we are asking the staff at Bannenberg and all of the teachers that day to be wearing red and white. It is also happening to be Dr. Susan Berstein that day, so we actually got the kickoff day, so it's a big deal. Um, all of the news media outlets will be invited, and most likely will be there because, I put in a vanier, it's coming. The Cats will be there, uh, Thing One and Thing Two will be there, and there will be a giant coop there for Delta Dental. So I know I've used my three minutes, but it's super, super important. Um, I'm super excited about it, it's just a giant honor that Southfield was even considered. And as soon as I sent an email to Dr. Cook Robinson, by the time I hit send, I had yanked back, I knew that was going to be the response, um, but, you know, you've got to ask. So, um, Jeff and Robinson and I are working closely with NEA, and we're getting all the ends tied up, and as soon as we know more, obviously, the board will be informed, but it is a huge, huge honor for Southfield, and I'm just super excited about it.
Well, thanks for bringing, thanks for bringing that to the district. You know, this is just a testament of, you know, so many changes that have been in place over the past years, the cooperation, the, you know, coming together as a team between our, all of our, and we look at teachers in particular, because we have to be partners in this process in order for it to be successful. I appreciate your leadership and everything that you've done to help us bring everybody down.
Okay, I have one more thing. So, Southfield will be, I go to the National Education Association convention every year, and so Southfield will actually be featured in front of 10,000 teachers. They will see us, they will see our pictures, they will see our kids, and so it just doesn't get better than that.
Well, I, are there any more comments from the board? Board matters?
Some of the board matters now? Um, I, this, this, this is a difficult day for me, a difficult conversation to have with the community, and with my partner in all these years, Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson. Um, Wanda, I've just been amazed at how you have taken us from what I call a very dark period, uh, things weren't great, people were running through this board when I first got here. And, you know, through your dedication, your hard work, you know, your commitment, when I, you know, you've heard me describe Wanda over the years, being a community teacher, she's like that old-school teacher in the community, you see her ride through on the buggy, whatever. The bunny just happened to be a Cadillac one.
An old Cadillac.
No, you got to move it, you know, with the old Apple phone. But, I mean, when I say she's a, she's a community teacher, I mean that in every aspect, I mean, she is everywhere, and, you know, she just exudes that, that, um, that willingness to learn that everybody. When I talked about, you know, how the teachers, you know, how we're coming together now, you were so instrumental in creating a professional learning environment here that was so, that was exemplified during the process of looking at the textbooks. And they were just so engaged, and I just watched, you know, how energetic and how everybody just really gave their all in terms of that. And that's just, that, that comes from the top. That, you, you exhibit that in everything that you do. It's sad because you're leaving, but, you know, I'm, I'm getting kind of used to this now, because here in Southfield, you know, we, we create leaders, and you just look around at where our people end up, you know, just recently, David Turner, you know, who was, you know, we had him for a brief moment, but he was such a superstar in terms of how he was able to, you know, come in and, and really help turn things around. He's now a vice president at Eastern Michigan University. You know, Wanda, you're going on to, to greater things, and that's just, you know, that's just how it is here. We exude greatness, and it started, you know, with your leadership. That greatness didn't exist before. I will always be indebted to you for, you know, your friendship, above all, your leadership, and just your commitment to all the kids in this community. That's the glue, that's what keeps Southfield, you know, where we are. It's going to make this community great, you know. You're leaving us in a much better place than where we were when we got here, and that's just an amazing accomplishment. You earned this, God bless you, and I just wish the best for you and everything that you do going forward.
Thank you so much.
My heart has only skipped a beat a few times. That was my marriage, when I first met my wife, worked with my kids. When I first came onto the board four years ago with Michael Poole, and we had a $23.7 million deficit, a $1.6 million investment we just made, and then when you made mention and announced your potential resignation. It's slowly sinking in now, that is a reality. From our lovely coffee breaks to our grilling, drilling, long hours, schedules, you've always had a great smile, and you continue to have it right now. You made it fun, when we had difficult decisions to make, you would feed us very well. And was always willing to extend a helping hand. Over the past four years, we have spent together, you have become more than just a superintendent for me, you have become a friend and even a mentor. Wish you could stick around for a little more time, but life has other amazing plans for you, newer opportunities await you as you step ahead in your life. Wish you all the best for your continued success. Dr. Wanda Cook Robinson, I once called you in a closed session, a phenomenal woman. But over the years, you've demonstrated that you're actually an exceptional, extraordinary talent, an exceptional leader. I'm not going to go into that again, but I, I do want to wish you the best. I'm sure that you're going to take whatever organization you wind up in to the next level. Appreciate what you've done, but if they don't treat you right, you definitely have a home back here in Southfield.
Well, I want to thank you for all your efforts with the PTA. I will never forget our coffee hour with the superintendent. That was the first time any superintendent had ever done that, and I enjoyed thoroughly. The parents were super excited, they couldn't wait for the next one. I thank you for that. You will be truly blessed, we know that you're destined for greatness, we wish you well in your endeavors.
Thank you.
And if you need us for anything, just give me a call, we're here for you.
I want that cake, babe.
You don't forgot that cake. I will make that cake for you before you leave.
Thank you.
Um, like Grant, like Grant said, I feel like Dr. Robinson is more than a superintendent too, and there are words to describe, and I'm just thankful to know you, and I know we'll move forward and continue to watch you progress. I think it's important that school board members, and this being board matters, that we just reflect to the community that one of the most important jobs that a board of education is, is responsible for is hiring, or I should say, selecting a superintendent. So, we don't take this lightly, we're excited to approach this endeavor with heavy hearts, of course, because when I think about the shoes, this next person will have to fill. I don't, I don't, they're like Paul Bunyan's son. So, but it'll be something that engages our entire community, and will really shine a spotlight on how we do things in Southfield Public Schools, so, um, I'll be talking with you more.
Thank you.
Dr. Cook Robinson, I said what I wanted to say mostly in the letter, but in my long life, I have never met a woman who has worked as well or as hard as Dr. Cook Robinson, and I mean that sincerely. She's a 24/7 superintendent in this district, and, and she is leading us in very good shape, as I told you about the book, because she planned ahead, she planned everything and with a smile, and we are friends too. I thank you very much. I thank you for everything.
Thank you.
And thank this board for everything that you've done to help us.
Uh, we have future meetings. On February the 13th, we're having a special board meeting at 6:00 here. And on February 25th at 6:00, we have student hearings. On March the 11th at 7:00 is the regular board meeting. This meeting is adjourned.